Is there any knowledge on the board here or the zoning board that there is an established, you can't count it because I called Kane County, there's an established business there. Who's reading the tax mandates? Hampshire? No. County? No. Because the business is basically being ran out of another town. What does Hampshire do? Or what does the zoning board do? For this development, for this building, this construct, you can see this, it's a day by day. He opens at eight forty-five and he closes at three fifty to four o'clock. The gates are open. I'm not here to create negativity. We just need to positively control our Hampshire. That's what we want to do. I want to do. I want that pigsty cleaned up. It's a dome. And in fact, he owes Hampshire or taxing people of Kane County anything because it's being zoned this far away. So what can the board do? What can the board do for the county? To the county, get information, help. What can you do for Hampshire? Thank you.
Is that as anyone else?
That's it.
All right. So before you, you have the meeting minutes for May fourth, twenty twenty-three. Please review them at this time. Changes in minutes as they are presented?
Yes, there was one on the attendance. It looks trustee not as present, but then later the Simmons asked.
Blizzard's location where it notes where he arrived at the meeting?
It's on page two, seven thirty P M.
Okay, I got it. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments about the meeting minutes as they are presented? I don't attain a motion to approve the meeting minutes for May fourth, twenty twenty-three as they are presented.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? We're all here, so I can do all in favor.
Hi.
Oppose?
Abstention.
Sorry. We're used to doing a roll call vote because of COVID and remote attendance, but with us all being here, this all in favor thing's kind of new to us. Okay, this evening, first on our agenda, we have a presentation by Madam Chair, Erin Parag is here this evening. She is the County Board Chairman, and she's asked to come speak to us, and we were happy to accept her ask, if you will, her invitation to come speak to us. So we've never had in my time here, a Kane County Board Chair come speak to the board, so.
And I wish I'd gotten here sooner, but nonetheless, here I am with, I hope, some good updates. Our Board Member Barry Doherty wrote an email today, so why do you come into Hampshire? To say hello. As simple as that. And it's nice to be able to visit the communities that we serve and to actually hear your concerns, and thank you for the update about that bit of farm. So if you send that to me, I'll make sure it gets to the right process or place, and we can take a look at it. So a couple of updates, not taking too much of your time, and I think it's all pretty, pretty good news. So I'm bringing, I think, good news for you. As you know, and I was hoping to drive down French Road, which I did, but not on the construction side of it. There is, right now, we're working on the culverts on French Road, and that is going to, with Harmony near Higgins and Big Timber, and that is being developed. That project should be done by August of twenty-three, so towards the end of the summer. And the cost of that, and this is the county's money, is local money, one million, two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. So we're doing road improvements up here, and I know sometimes people think that most of our road improvements are done along Fox River Corridor. I just want to share with you that, yes, we love, truly love and support the communities on the western side of forty-seven and also seventy-two. The other one is coming into the future, and we have not pro-crown on that yet, but we are planning to. And I'd like to make you aware that we are planning a French Road extension to Harmony Road, and that is going to be a new roadway for you, which is an alignment connecting French Road to Harmony. Preliminary engineering is going to begin next year, so that's in twenty-four. The proposed project is also included in the county's adopt long-range transportation plans, and that has been in the works since nineteen ninety. So I know you have some issues with the train that's going to be coming through, and I think you're going to find this to be very helpful, but it's in the engineering phase. So this is not anything that's going to be done overnight. It may take about ten years.
I was gonna suggest twenty-nine.
So it's a coming, but it'll separate, it'll be a great separation, so the Canadian National Railroad will be able to go through a little easier, and you will be able to travel over the railroad tracks with much ease. Now, the money for that, and then we have to save up, is sixteen million dollars, and that was forecasted several years ago. So that may be amended, and definitely I can guarantee you that amount is not going down. It'll always go up. So those are two, I think, very important things for your economic development opportunities. The other is, I'd like to share with you the ride in Kane. Now, we have just recently funded through American Rescue Plan money, our ride-in Kane programs for our veterans. So if our veterans now are able to not just go from their local doctor within the county, they are now able to be extended, so they have to go to a clinic that's outside of the county, they will have the ability to do that. And I think that's something we can all certainly support. Our veterans have worked very hard, and they deserve everything we can possibly give them within reason. So all of the VA clinics as well. The other thing that you may be of interest in, and I don't know if you have this opportunity, is wind and solar. Have you ever looked at the wind and solar farms? I don't know if that has just been knocking on your door, because it's been knocking on a lot of communities' doors. We just put through an ordinance that we took advantage of the opportunity to do that, since the state of Illinois passed one of their state laws on how it's going to be changed. They're looking at it very favorably. So we wanted to make sure that we were able to make it favorably through Kane County and how to do it appropriately. Our biggest concern was with water runoff and making sure that that was done appropriately and properly, and the setbacks were far enough back that they wouldn't interfere with roads and with, also visual for people driving by. So we have just recently put that into place, and I have, I can leave this with you, so that you can take a look at it, and it gives you an update of what we're doing with our wind and solar farms. So it's, you know, the new form of energy, and sometimes it's really good, and sometimes I think we all can say that we're used to having energy hidden, and now it's going to be upfront and personal with us as we go into a new type of energy for environmental purposes. So the other things I'd like to share with you, now that's going to have a direct impact, before I go on, it's a little bit about one of my favorite topics is economic development, is our water study. Now, once again, through ARPA, we had received a grant that was requested to study water here in Kane County, and that was something I actually campaigned on. Water, as we know, is a finite resource. It is. It simply is. We don't have access to a lot of water here in Kane County, the Fox River, obviously, but you and much of Kane County is aquifers, both deep and shallow aquifers. Now, the deep aquifer, which some of you may be getting your water from, takes a thousand years to repopulate. So it takes very long times. So many of our wells are shallow aquifers. And when those shallow aquifers are drawn up and are dried, what happens is something similar to what's happening in Joliet. There's no water. So they have spending out billions of dollars, billions, millions of dollars to access water from Cook County, from Lake Michigan. We do not have that opportunity here. So we're looking at doing, we are doing a study currently, creating databases to monitor and assess the long-term drinking water supply. This includes Hampshire. Now, you could say, we've got plenty of water. You want to know if you've got enough water for twenty years, if you've got enough water for a hundred and fifty years, so you can make projections, particularly since there's a potential of a lot of new growth in this area. I heard today from Mayor Shelkey from Matadia, that this aggregate area here is looking at having a population in about thirty years of over a hundred thousand new people with the new housing starts. You've got the land, you've got the highway, and you've got economic development that's going to be happening here. So this something with water, we have to develop. There will be an interactive webpage to highlight our local groundwater supplies and future projected water quality concerns. So this will be something that you can put your developers to, city council, village councils will be able to take a look what that's all about. We will also then develop a comprehensive educational program focused on water demand challenges and way to reduce peak water demand. So that's low-foot toilets, it's using your washing machine during a different time of the day, making sure that you're fully loaded. You understand, there's something we can do very easily to preserve this natural resource. Probably one of the biggest things is don't water your lawn, as much as we love green lawn, you know, don't water your lawn. And we also want to make sure that we study how road salts and other pollutants impact Kane County's drinking water. So that is something very difficult to do because of our landscape. Companies are all, okay, nice small businesses in which we support, but having to control how much salt they put on your roads and in your developments. So all of this is just simply to provide the resources for sustained growth, because I want to make sure that my grandchildren, your grandchildren can stay here in Kane County and feel that we don't have to turn it to Arizona with the dust. And I think that's something we all have to pay attention to. So what's happening with our economic development? Because I know you're going to be talking about that. So as I was researching the road construction you were, you're doing, or it's proposed to happen here, this is from a twenty fifteen study that is currently on the Kane County Transportation website, and it projects two thousand, this is done from the Northeastern Planet Commission, in two thousand, not too many years ago, there were four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three people here in Hampshire. Nice sized town, beautiful little town. Projected population in twenty thirty, twenty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one. Remember, I just said they're thinking about a hundred thousand people in this regional area here. That's a huge growth. Now, what about jobs? Your job growth is going to go up to six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five jobs in this area, which means you're going to have a lot more people moving in. So what do we do with all of that? Well, we launch an economic development opportunity so that we make sure that there is economic development, planned economic development in our entire county. Kane County has been for a very long time, the only county within regional area that doesn't have an economic development council. So I think it's time. I think it's time. So once again, we received not only state grants, but also ARPA grant to launch this, and we're in the middle of just beginning, and it's so exciting. So what this means is that we will be working truly collaboratively with all of the economic development councils up and down the county. We'll be reaching out with them, speaking with them, and helping each other with the developments. So if you happen to have a company that's coming here to look for a site here in the Hampshire area, but it's just not quite right, maybe Burlington has got the perfect site for them, and maybe people in Burlington would find that building and development are moving here to Hampshire is exactly what they're looking for. So it has much more a regional approach rather than just a specific base for your village or your city, but we've also even extended it further. We're part of a regional economic development council that hadn't tried in the past, but this time I think it's going to be highly successful. We have seven counties, including Cook County. We shook hands, we all made promises to each other that we're going to develop a regional approach to this. So Lake County has a company that's looking for a site or looking for new opportunities, and they don't find it in Lake. It's going to go to the database, and they're going to see that these sites are here in Kane County as well, which is going to be helpful for that job growth, the job potential. What Kane County has is remarkable and different from many other counties. We've got incredible farmland, which we protect. We're one of the only counties in the state of Illinois that has a farmland protection group, which we will support, one point four billion dollars, I'll say that again, billion with a B, comes in from our farms. That is something we're going to continue to make sure that we protect. For every farm that is sold for housing, we lose some of the richest farm, literally most people, it's so important at local food sources, and some of the richest dirt in the United States for growth. So can we manage, can be developed appropriately so that that richness, that resource can go part and parcel with your new development of your homes. There's certainly ways to plan one. So we have, we've just hired a consultant who's going to lead us through this process. As we go a little bit further on, and we're going to do a strategic plan, that's next step, so we find out what our strengths and weaknesses are here for the county for business development. After we put that together, then we'll be reaching out to both private industry, we'll be a public-private partnership, where the county will be supporting some of it, but not a great deal of it. It has to be a private partnership in support of the county, because it has to be led by business. It has to be led by small business as well as large businesses. So we work together with this to make sure that Kane County's economic potential is really developed in the effective way that we want it to be, no more, no less, but on a good standard approach. So those are kind of the great things we've been working on. We're very excited with all of this, and I really want to thank you for the opportunity to bring, I think, good news to Hampshire. So I have questions to ask. Railroad's coming, and I hope, and I applaud you for being a leader with that, with making that settlement. I know it's going to bring some challenges for you. I know the city of Elgin is very concerned, as they should be, as they should be. It's going to be great changes, but we stepped up quickly, we negotiated fairly and appropriately, and I hope that they're going to give you exactly what you want and what you need to make sure that railroad crosses are safe, that you're able to get your school buses and your ambulances across quickly, and that doesn't hold you up. And one thing I have to say about the trains, and I think we can all agree upon, is that the trains are much more efficient with energy and less polluting than having a bunch of trucks coming through, and that study's been done. So with that, I happen to love trains, so they know it. I would like to invite you, we're going to have a new feature, and we'll send out information, an opportunity to learn about hydrogen energy and what the new wave of that future is going to be. I'm going to be reaching out to Mary Loy, who's in charge of the Civil Railroad Line, who I talked to, the community outreach, and Canadian City already has a test pilot, hydrogen train. And that energy is a vital resource for us, and we'll see how it is for Kane County, because Illinois is vying to be a hydrogen partner, where there'll be, again, multi-billionous dollars of development industry will be coming after that energy source. And I want to make sure that it comes to Illinois, Kane County is prepared to have a piece of that pie. It's going to be close to here. So the other two things I'll read is that Kane County soon will be recognized as one of the top counties in the United States, and that'll be talked about in June. And also in June, the Fox River Trail is poised to become nationally recognized river trail. So all exciting stuff. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Thank you again.
And I'd like to see.
You're welcome. Are you looking for applicants to serve on the Kane County Economic Development Council?
Soon, soon.
Happy to know a guy that might have some free time. So with that, with that, I probably should have done this ahead of time. We do have some appointments up here, but I kind of feel that it's odd that we're asking Chairman Kojeki to come and address us as Chairman of the Business Development Commission. The point is successor ahead of time. So I, we do the appointments afterwards, so I need a formal motion to amend the agenda, and we just have a presentation first.
You can either amend the agenda with a two-thirds vote, or if there's no objection, and I want to call in the other minor first, that's fine. You have either option.
Is everyone okay with Chairman Kojeki making his last presentation to the board?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Start the clock, children.
All right. Good evening, everyone. First, yeah, I guess, sure. Give you a copy. I want to thank soon-to-be Chairman Liz Martin for putting this together for you. And Josh, is someone able to run?
Yeah, I'm.
Thank you, Lord.
Here. I will note that there, we did have a little bit of a snap move on a couple of pages. You'll notice, just two of them. So you'll notice there's a little bit of a difference that's up there. We can email you the copy if you haven't already.
Thank you.
There you go. Okay, I'm gonna pull my computer out real quick. So, well, thank you, guys. It is the, well, I thought the appointments were coming first, so.
I had to call an audible.
Okay, so thank you, guys. First off, thank you for giving this Business Development Commission the opportunity to speak. Moreover, thank you for the support that you've given this commission over the six years that I've been lucky to be a part of it. You know, we started a long time ago without really much of an idea of what we were doing, to be quite frank with you. But over the course of time, I think, feel like we've done some things. So what we have in front of you today, perfect, is a presentation. Oh, I'm sorry. That's why I'm a turned politician. I meant to. Small time, small time. So, thank you for this. Okay, so what brings us to this point today? So at the beginning of two thousand twenty-two, well, first I want to introduce Liz Martin, who is sitting on the Business Development Commission, as well as Vice Chair Pizzalato, they've joined us today, so I'm grateful to have their questions. So, so the beginning of two thousand twenty-two, we had just finished the street skate project. And I'll be honest with you, I really didn't know what to do. So we had spent the better part of four years, maybe almost five years, working on developing the Smart Growth Initiative project that we worked on through the EPA, as well as, you know, securing the funding from the state of Illinois for the downtown street project, which we're very grateful for the help from Freddie Schmody. I never want to stop acknowledging her. She was a huge component of helping us get us across the line, as well as Administrator Jay Hedges and John Trey and Mike Reed and you guys as well. But we got to the beginning of two thousand twenty-two, and we really didn't know what we were going to do. So I don't know how, if I just look at you and see this nicely. I'll try to be smooth. Okay, that's good. So I picked the phone, I called Jay, and I go, Jay, we meet every month, and I don't know what to talk about anymore. You know, we had just finished doing all this stuff, and so Jay and I had breakfast, and Jay had expressed to us the need for giving the administration some direction when they begin to analyze prospects from businesses that are coming in, you know, developments that are coming in. And what he really wanted to have our group do was to work on developing a cohesive strategy so that he could hear not just from the Business Development Commission, we did the work, but ultimately the Village Board, what your opinion would be. So I sat down with Jay, and that was kind of the direction that he had given us. You know, I'd never developed an economic development strategy before, but thankfully, Aaron Kelly, through his corporate experience, as well as Josh Ray, through his Masters in Public Administration, had some idea of what we had to do. So we had, we'd gotten together, Jay, no, excuse me, Josh, Aaron and I, and we began what we called charting the course, right? We kind of recognized that we were starting off with no economic development strategy, and at the end, we wanted to have an economic development strategy. And so what we did is we tried to lay out the steps that it would take for us to get there. And this really is where Josh Ray came in as a, as a big help. So through some of his, the beginning parts of our process, after we had decided the charting the course part, Josh really began to explain to us different ways of looking at economic development. You know, oftentimes, I think that, you know, the average person, when they think of economic development, they think only of business, right, trying to attract businesses. But through our conversations and the education for Josh, we really were able to broaden that lens and to look at it from a much more holistic perspective. And he actually ended up guiding us to this concept of identifying goals, right? And so we developed some goals, which I'm going to talk about in a second, and then to sort of look at lenses that we could look at those goals through. So the reason that we did that was so that we would try not to miss out on anything. So we tried to look at the goals, and then under the goals, we had, I think, six different lenses that we were going to look through. And then from that, which I'll show you here in a minute, we were able to feel as though we looked at every one of those goals from as comprehensive a perspective as possible. And so, so if we go to the next slide, okay, so the goals that we as a group, so the way that this was handled in our, in our meetings, as is always handled in the Business Development Commission, is it's really just an open format, right? We begin to sort of talk about ideas, with sort of a goal of where we're going, and then the rest of the group will come in and start to add their ideas. So as a group, we kind of, you know, kind of just try to think about Hampshire's future, and what are some of the goals that we feel like, you know, from where we stand today, what are some of the things that we want to achieve? And the four goals that we had come up with was to attract and retain business, diversify the local economy, enhance the community's image, and then provide additional resources to our citizens. We felt, from an economic development perspective, that all four of those goals were very important to the people that we are in charge here, representing. And then from there, we went ahead and we looked at the different lenses. So this took us a little bit to figure out. So we kind of went back and forth a few times. There was some confusion as to what it meant. So I want to take a couple of minutes to describe what that, what that means. So we have beautification, sustainability, land use, communication, village participation, and infrastructure. And so what we wanted to do is we wanted to look at the four different goals of attract, retain business, diversify the local economy, enhance the community's image, provide additional resources. And we wanted to look at each one of those through one of these lenses and see, you know, how could we use the concept of beautification to achieve attractive, retain business? How can we use the concept of land use in terms of providing additional resources to our citizens? And so through that process, what we were able to do was develop a matrix. So in this matrix, and, you know, anybody who knows the work of the Business Development Commission, we try to be pretty orderly. This may seem nerdy to some people, but this was the process that we felt made the most sense. And so we really just went across, you know, or excuse me, down on all the different goals that we had, attract and retain businesses. And then we as a group just sat and brainstormed and thought about, okay, what are some of the things that we can do through beautification to attract and retain business? So one of those things was the facade program, obviously. Another one of those was street skate project. Another was develop standards for future buildings along north along state, which is one of our big dreams that we want to see downtown extended, and so on and so forth. We did the same thing for sustainability. Sustainability, obviously, you know, is the idea that although we are living here present, other people will look here after us, and we should be somewhat considerate of that. So we wanted to drive, you know, we thought that was that so many citizens are attached, you know, are integrated through social media, through the websites, through, you know, coming to these kind of meetings, so we felt that was a lens that we needed to look at. Village participation, you know, what is the responsibility of the village beyond just communication? And then, and then infrastructure. So those were the different lenses. So we took the better part of probably about six months, six different meetings, where we went ahead and we just populated, you know, all the different goals. And as you can see, there's wide ranging from, you know, land use and enhance the community's image. We have focus on parks and green space, for example, focus heavily on walkability, bikeability. These are things that we think, you know, will represent values long term. You know, in communication, we talked about pushing, push up communication regarding facade program participants, highlight companies that make investments in the building, so on and so forth. So what we really first wanted to do was to develop this sort of bucket of different strategies that we felt fit under the different goals and lenses, and that took us a little bit of time. Now, as you can see, we came up with a bunch of different strategies. And, you know, what we didn't want to do to you guys was just dump it on you. This is what we think, good luck. You know, we understand that our most precious resource is time, right? And so we only have so much of it. And so what we wanted to do was, okay, of all these different strategies that we had developed, which are the ones do we feel that the Village Board should prioritize ahead of others? Certainly, we felt if you were to go and sort of just focus on all of them all at once, we felt that the success would not be as good. So, so we were lucky to have Mr. Pizzolato, or the Survey Master, we like to call him. So thankfully, he is in marketing at ACE, and so running surveys is something that he's very good at. We've done, as you guys are probably aware, a series of them. So instead of taking up four or five meetings, basically trying to arm wrestle it out as to which ones should be the, the strategies that we focused on first, Dave created a survey. So we took all of the individual strategies that I had showed you originally, and that big metrics, and Dave had sent that out in a survey, and then every one of the Business Development Commission members were to basically vote on, on a scale of one to 10, I think it was, how important, oh no, we voted them, I think, didn't we? We ordered them, one to.
It was a ranking order.
Yes, it was a ranking order, right? We ranked them, so. But we took input from everybody, and then what, because of the survey monkey tool that we used, they collated all that information, you know, very easily. And what we found was that there was about eight of them that jumped out at us, you know, that kind of stood out above the rest. And so what we wanted to do, while we do think that you guys over the long term should focus on all of them, we feel that these first eight are the ones that you should focus on first. And I should add, this is just a recommendation, we're perfectly aware that we're an advisory, an advisory board, and this is ultimately your decision what you do, but this is what our recommendations are. So the eight that we came up with, number one, uh, next one, sorry, next one, we're new at this, no, we'll get it, by the next meeting, we'll have it down. All right, so the first one, what we think is most important is we think you guys need to focus on updating the comprehensive plan. So the last comprehensive plan that we had put forth, I think it was 2004?
That's finally, oh, yeah.
Okay, oh, eight. So it's been a bit, right? It's been about 15 years. So we think that that's really the most important thing, as we, you know, and, and just to remind you what this is for, this is really to give to the Village Board and the administrations so that they can look through that as a lens when they're making decisions on, you know, who to, you know, who are we looking to promote, you know, what are the businesses, where should it be located, et cetera, et cetera. So the first one is update the comprehensive plan. Now, in addition to the strategy, what we also tried to do was to lay out who owns that strategy, you know, who is the, the primary responsible party for this strategy? And in this particular one, we expect the Planning and Zoning Commission to be the primary responsible party. However, we believe that in addition to planning and zoning, that it would be in the interest of the villages of Hampshire to incorporate input from all taxing bodies, all community organizations, and unincorporated community organizations as well. The second thing, and I think this goes somewhat to Commissioner Prague's statement earlier, the need to expand infrastructure, right? New businesses and the businesses that we want to bring to Hampshire that we think are going to provide the highest quality jobs are one to require that infrastructure be invested in, both not just in roads, but in, in the water systems, in high speed internet, you know, in additional energy resources and things of that nature. So that is the second thing. The owner of that particular strategy, we feel, is village staff. But in addition to that, I think we need to get input from the Public Works Committee, the Village Board, as well as the Business Development Commission. The third, and we may be somewhat biased on this one, but we think the third most important thing is the facade program. So we believe that the owner of that particular program is the beautification committee. We think it, additional people that can contribute their input is the Business Development Commission, as well as the Village Board. The fourth is to keep the website current. I think that thanks in large part to Mike's work that he did before he was President of the Village, the website is in far better shape today than it was. However, we think that it should continue to be an important thing that we as the village continue to invest in in order to provide information to, you know, prospective development companies or, you know, different organizations, so that they know exactly what we're about, all the programs that we have to offer. In this way, they don't have to actually pick up the phone and call into, you know, Jay or Josh to get that information, or, you know, whoever happens to pick up the phone. Okay, the fifth thing, and this, I think, is really important. Analyze, continue to analyze opportunities for state and federal funding. One of the, one of the things I think is the art of politics is how do you take your town and work within the existing governmental structures that are above you or beyond you, and sort of tilt the playing field in your direction a little bit? And there are a lot of programs. I mean, our street state, as everybody knows, our street state would not have been done without that grant from the state of Illinois, right? There's no way we would have ever been able to come up with the funds to do that specific project. So we believe that that is something that you guys need to continue to do. We believe the owner of that is village staff. Sixth, after we had made all the investments into the downtown, we think it is imperative that we continue on code enforcement.
Sorry, Lester, connect.
Oh, no, that's okay. I think everyone's mesmerized, they're not even looking at the screen. Code enforcement, don't back down on code enforcement, right? It was a lack of code enforcement that put us into this position in the first place. We certainly do not want to end up in that same spot again, although sometimes it can be uncomfortable, or we don't want us to be seen as an adversary to our businesses or even residents. It is something that we owe to the other citizens of Hampshire, that we hold up all stakeholders in our community to the standards that have been laid out, and we believe that is something that we need to continue to do. There have been some strategies that we've talked about over the years in terms of, and I'm not going to forget it right now, administrative adjudication is maybe an idea that you guys might want to think about doing, but we want you to continue, we believe, again, our recommendation is that code enforcement continue to, to be there. Number seven, we think that you guys should continue to keep incentives for business in the budget. We understand that budgets are always tight, you know, despite what the general public might think, most governments aren't overflowing with riches, you know, so we have to be very careful where we spend our money. But what we do believe is that the incentives for businesses, unfortunately, the way that the United States is structured, oftentimes, we're competing with other towns, we're competing with other counties, we're competing with other states. And so while our coffers may not be as rich, being that we're local, we still believe that those incentives are useful over the long term, we just advise you to make sure that they are balanced in terms of, you know, the benefit that are given to the citizens of this town are not sort of a secondary to the benefits to the businesses that we are trying to get to come here. I think that is a responsibility that we owe to the people of town. And then finally, number eight, as you begin to, as you continue to think of housing developments, is the opinion of the Business Development Commission that we need to continue to focus on the diversity case, diversification of housing, so that we can promote a diverse customer base and workforce. One of the things that I've heard frequently from citizens in town, and we talk about it on our board, is that sometimes in, in Hampshire, it can be, you know, one thing to raise family here, it might be hard to retire here sometimes, it may be hard to, in, in terms of housing products, in terms of housing products, right? We want to have, you know, so we want diversification of housing, right? And we want to be able to bring in, you know, housing for the people who are working. So we think the diversification of the housing product is also important. We believe the owner of that would be the Village Board and then zoning.
Yeah.
So that, those are the, those are the eight, eight strategies that we think the Business Development Commission is recommending that we focus on first. Now, it is one thing to lay out a strategy, it's the second thing to achieve that strategy. And so what we have is a second set of recommendations, as it comes down to, we believe that it is imperative, I'm gonna switch to my other presentation, because I guess no one's on here. We think that we need to analyze those strategies, and then we need to, we need to develop key metrics. We believe it should be something that you guys are focused on, on a regular basis, whether it's quarterly or semiannually, that you look at these eight different strategies, you lay out metrics, metrics that will analyze or be able to give you input as to whether or not you are moving towards those goals. And if we are not moving towards those goals, we recommend that you make appropriate adjustments and modifications to the plan such that you can get back on track and move towards those goals. And hopefully, with that sort of set out a goal, implement a strategy, analyze the results, make modifications, re-implement the strategy, if we can stick to that type of system, our odds of moving forward success on all of these areas on first aid, so that we can move on to the next, you know, 18, is something that we think you guys can, you guys can build a plan to, get to. All right, so, yeah, and I think that's pretty much what we have. You know, it took us about 15 months to come up with this. You know, at this point, the, and we do only meet once a month, so it may look like a lot of stuff, but we meet once a month for a couple hours, but this is what we've come up with, and at this point, we would like to turn this over to the Village Board, and we would love for you guys to consider it and, you know, consider adopting it as part of the Village Development Commission. At this point, I'm open to taking one.
I will just add, we'll make sure to email and PDF recommend this to everybody, because some of the printing, there's just something happening. So we'll make sure that you get PDFs and sure on Friday.
Thank you, Eric, that's true.
Because that's how some people are.
Yeah, I mentioned that when I passed, and I probably have more time on that. Okay, any questions?
I just want to thank you and the, and the nation's work. I know that this was started years ago, and we didn't know what we were doing with economic development, as far as, you know, it's good to, you know, we have our Village Board committees, right? And we all serve for our own reasons, right? But we're not experts in any of the field, and we're coming up short, and to no fault of anybody that's serving, but we had, we had a bunch of people that cared about Hampshire, and then we said, okay, well, let's start with the economic development committee. And really just spinning our wheels, chasing our tail, year after year, meeting after meeting. So that's why this approach, which was founded, was started by Mike Armato when he was on the board, because it's what other municipalities, maybe even the Carpentersville, started this type of mission. And it's really beneficial to, to bring in people that have that business mindset. And as you can see downtown, it, it works, right? I mean, that's, it's plain and simple what it comes down to, is, is the work that they put into it, their heart, their desires, their vision for our community, it's not, not, not appreciated. I mean, it's, you guys do some really great work, and I know I convinced you to stick around for as long as I could, you warned me that you weren't going to stick it out the whole time, but I, I really appreciate that you wanted to give up the trusty thing, and I was able to convince you to stay.
Well, you're a good salesman, in my opinion.
A little from the best.
All right, so thank you, guys, we appreciate it. We hope you take this seriously, you implement it into your long-term strategy. It's one thing to deal with the day-to-day maintenance, but really successful organizations are able to plan for the future, organize themselves as to towards it. So thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Thanks. Now we'll go back in time to the appointments. Ms. Liz Martin, this year, this evening, she, she is of interest in becoming the Chair of the Business Development Commission. And it's a rare thing, and I did it, but I let the outgoing guy interview his replacement, right? Because typically, how we handle this in our, in our commission form is we let the chairperson do that, and I figured this, I mean, Brian's done such a good job, so we interviewed Ms. Martin, and I feel that I'm entrusted with recommendation at this point. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Martin over the process? Well, with that, I'll entertain a motion to issue the appointment of Ms. Liz Martin as Chair of the Business Development Commission for the term ending April 30th, 2026. Questions, comments, concerns? For an appointment, do I need roll call, or all in favor?
Roll call.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Mott?
Aye.
Ms. Paul Street?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Butler?
Aye.
And Mr. Kelly? All right, pass six zero. So the next one, I know everybody kind of scratched their head when they read it, but I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna say what it is. So we have a gentleman right now by the name of Chip Heson Flo that served on the Police Pension Board for a long time. He served since Chris Spiker at Pitt Third Bank, which used to be across the way, changed their policy, and it was a conflict of interest for somebody who worked at the bank that we had accounts at to serve on any of our commissions. So he had to give up his seat, we, we, we had Chip Heson Flo serve in that position. Chip has been out of state now for quite some time, moved to North Carolina, and he's continued to serve, but we've been trying to find somebody more local for signatures and statutory reasons and that kind of stuff. And we've been trying for a long time, and we haven't been able to find anybody with a financial background that had time to serve. We posted this on our website and that kind of stuff, and, and nobody has served. We've actually interviewed, not interviewed, but I'd say I had conversations with several individuals, and so I don't want to minimize this for Ms. Lyons, but she was the last bitch ever in the world, because she, I mean, I don't, I don't mean to minimize it, but I mean, she is our finance director, so there's an implication, it looks like there might be a conflict of interest, which there is not, it's a completely separate thing, and this is statutory obligation, and she's legally allowed to serve on that, on the Police Pension Board because it's a separate function than the village.
And she's remarkably qualified.
And she, and, and as you know, she's remarkably qualified, but I will say this publicly, that if somebody were to come in and, and say, hey, they were interested, I don't think that there's a second that Ms. Lyons would go, oh gee, no, take this, don't take this away from me. But I appreciate Ms. Lyons stepping in, but we, we have some statutory requirements that we need to meet, and so I appreciate the fact that you're willing to do this for us in an official capacity. Does the board have any questions in that aspect?
I have one question, why is the term ending next April 30th? So it's less than one year term.
So I will be filling an unexpired term of Mr. Heson Flo. So the board has two appointments, or the Village President has two appointments to the Pension Board, and they are on staggering terms. So I will fill for Mr. Heson Flo's one year remain, the remaining portion of his term, and then you'll be asked probably at the next meeting to reappoint Dr. Scarpino, who will be serving a full year term, and then we'll be back in.
So this is again, you know, I appreciate, I'm not, I'm not trying to minimize your volunteering, as I'm just trying to explain to the board why we're appointing a staff person to this commission. this for Ms. Lyons, but she was the last bitch ever in the world because she, I mean, I don't, I don't mean to minimize it, but I mean, she is our finance director. So there's an implication. It looks like there might be a conflict of interest, which there is not. It's a completely separate thing. And this is statutory obligation. And she's legally allowed to serve on that, on the police pension board because it's a separate function than the village.
And she's remarkably qualified.
And she, and as you know, she's remarkably qualified. But I will say this publicly, that if somebody were to come in and, and say, hey, they were interested, I don't think that there's a second that Ms. Lyons would go, oh gee, no, take this, don't take this away from me. But I appreciate Ms. Lyons stepping in, but we, we have some statutory requirements that we need to meet. And so I appreciate the fact that you're willing to do this for us in an official capacity. Does the board have any questions in that aspect?
I have one question. What is the term ending next April 30th? So it's less than one year term.
So I will be filling an unexpired term of Mr. Heson Flo. So the board has two appointments, or the village president has two appointments to the pension board, and they are on staggering terms. So I will fill for Mr. Heson Flo's one year remain, the remaining portion of his term. And then you'll be asked probably at the next meeting to reappoint Dr. Scarpino, who will be serving a full year term. And then we'll be back in.
So this is again, you know, I appreciate, I'm not, I'm not trying to minimize your volunteering, as I'm just trying to explain to the board why we're appointing a staff person to this commission, to this, yes, commission.
And one, absolutely, I'm thrilled that you're stepping forward. I just have the one question is that because you're the one that actually sends the payments for the pension board and does that under the village, is that a problem then?
I think that's a question for our attorney, and he's the one that we asked about this in the beginning.
No, wait, there's not a problem. That does a ministerial functions and a direct at.
Okay.
Directed from that, right? The body, the corporate authorities. Her role on there is, comes with the advice and consent of the board upon the appointment, recommendation of the village president. So there should be a problem. There is not a problem there.
And if there's, again, if there's a concern from this board, we don't need to move forward with this. But again, we're trying to meet some statutory obligations and it's a one year term. Hopefully, we can find somebody to replace her because as we know, Lori likes to live here as it is. And this is just going to take more time away from other things that she should be doing, namely, and being a part of, namely, her family. So. Does, does anyone else have any other questions or concerns? With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve Ms. Lori's, so the police pension board, I'll trust these for a term ending April 30th, 2024.
Allo.
Again, questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Deputy Kirk, can you call the roll, please? Mr. Mott?
Aye.
Ms. Paul Street?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Futter?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Looking past six zero. With that, I'll say good evening to Mr. Hedges.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think you have a hearing. I hope you fully have actually recognized me, please.
I didn't want you to be sad that I never recognized you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
I'm going to open the public hearing now. I don't need to vote for that, right? I just opened the public hearing. You go ahead and you vote to go into the public hearing. I might read, open the public hearing at eight fifty. Seven fifty-three. Sorry, I was pushing. He was gonna say. Okay, I'm eighteen, twenty twenty-three, in the village board room here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'll just explain to the board that I have some statements that I'll be reading. These are obligations of the CDBG grant program. This public hearing is an obligation as we close out the program. And that Freddie Best Money has prepared these remarks for me. So I want to thank Freddie for that and compliment her for decades of work for the village, especially Ms. Friday. Ryan, we sat in my office with Freddie, what, three years, three hundred years ago?
Yeah.
And that's where this ultimately comes. With that, I'll, I'll read these statements. The Streetscape project was funded through a community development block grant revolving loan program, a closeout grant awarded by the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity in the amount of one million, thirty thousand, four hundred, thirty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. The objective of the, of the revolving loan fund, closeout program was for those municipalities with revolving loan fund balances to be able to utilize those funds rather than for the dollars to revert back to the general CDBG pool at the state of Illinois. The Hampshire Streetscape project addressed documented lighting conditions of the buildings and infrastructure in the central business district. The grant-funded interest, public infrastructure included construction of improvements along State Street between Washington and Jefferson Streets, including the reconstruction of streets, sidewalks, water and sewer mains, and the installation of aesthetic improvements, including streets and pedestrian lighting and landscaping. The grant period for the project started on May first, 2021 and ended April 30th, 2023. The amount of the grant was one million, twenty-four thousand, four hundred, forty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents, as per the contract with Alliance Construction, Inc. It was the lowest qualified bidder. Costs incurred in the excess of the grant amount were paid by the village. If you recall, we had some changers along the way for increased costs. The original engineering grant budget was in the amount of one hundred thousand, one hundred and one thousand dollars, and all CDBG, CDBG funds allocated for engineering have been dispersed. As a result of the CDBG project and its impact on slumming lighted conditions in the central business district, there have been four new businesses opened and six businesses that have improved the sides, replaced windows and improved the exterior of the buildings. Additional new private investment in the CDBG project area is projected this year and beyond. Thank you, Mr. President.
Are there any questions about this project at all, either the board or the audience?
Can we properly thank Freddie Schmody? I want to give just one more shout out to her. She was phenomenal. But navigating, what's that?
I didn't hear what you said. I'm sure it was funny. You're not the chairman anymore. Yeah, no, I totally agree.
No, I know. I just, I wanted to say thank you to Freddie. She was remarkable. And navigating a very difficult process on this front field was not easy.
You guys all did great work. And Freddie was a, is a big asset to this community. But she's provided a good decade, for sure. Are there any other questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Roll call, both, please. Ms. Paul Street?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Futter? Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Looking past six zero.
Thank you. With that, we would ask your consideration of a resolution waiving bidding requirements and accepting the quote from Entree Computer Solutions for the server replacement of the police department in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, five hundred, sixty-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents. You have an agenda supplement in your packet. And Ms. Lyons will be able to answer the questions. This is, Entree is our network administrator and both are leasing. So they're sort of captive contracting.
We've typically waived bidding requirements for computer stuff like that because we specialize and you don't, it's really not common place to bring in outside vendors.
Have we, have we reached out and just priced servers to make sure they're in, in the realm of good? Not, not in a competitive way because these are, you know, this comes with installation and all their experience and services. So it's hard just to take one piece out of it.
I can, I can tell you that while I didn't look at, at a competitive nature, I'm sure someone will come in and undercut, just because that's just by nature of it, but it's in line. So all I can tell you, you know, as far as technology goes nowadays, what they're pricing out is pretty competitive.
Is, is this in relation to your setup for that, the technology upgrades that she presented on beforehand? This is one, this is obviously the biggest piece of it, yes. And then the ink car computers, which are already purchased, as well as the ink car printers and the software. Those are the primary pieces. But this is the infrastructure and inside. That's part of what he had presented. Right.
What is the projected, what was it, shelf life then of the server then? Because obviously we've hit the cap of the one that we have. So how many years was this?
So I, I laugh because, you know, you figure average shelf life for anything is between, you know, they say between three and five years. That's what the salespeople try to tell you. But as you know, we try to run things a lot longer than that. Realistically, with the specs that you're seeing here, the operating systems that are out now and that will come out in the future should, should be sustainable. The problem is, is that the real unknown, I guess you would say, is the storage space and how we're going to handle all the footage from the body cams and that. So I wouldn't be surprised. It's been a few years while we wouldn't need to rip and replace because the specs are what they are. I wouldn't be surprised if your, if we're, the staff doesn't come to us saying, hey, we need to figure out more storage, more onsite storage.
Does it have to be onsite? Could we move to cloud-based storage? There's a lot of discussion about the state actually creating a repository for all of these body cameras and stuff. So there's a lot, there'll be a lot of opportunities out there. Because I'm just thinking, as, as we're talking about this, the need for a server room and temperature control mitigation. People like for West has been talking about going together and putting together a, a storage facility.
And there's, there's so much in the air as far as that goes because the legislation isn't even that clear about how much that we're supposed to retain onsite in case of a disaster or something of that nature, too. It's all going to be dictated, it's all going to be dictated by the law and it's going to be dictated about how it all comes to fruition. But even if we go with some kind of cloud solution, to your point, they're still going to have to, there's still probably going to be a need for local storage at some point to even just hold it for a temporary period of time. And it's going to be dictated about how much footage we're supposed to be able to routine.
Just opposed to, for planning purposes, we, we consider our computers five-year memorization time. But I can tell you, Lori's last one was about ten years old, I think. Or she got this one. And Mike suggested we probably will tend to. So that's pretty concerning.
I don't like spending this much money on technology either. And I look at it and I go, wow, that's a lot of money. But the positive is, is that we went from, the last time we did this, if I remember, we didn't buy the hours. And they took from.
No, we did buy hours.
One of the projects we did in the very beginning, I forget, we didn't buy the hours and they took from our bank. And then we switched to the model of, we're going to buy the hours that's anticipated for the project at the worst end. And then whatever hours that are not used for that project will revert back to our bank and we can use it for other things. So that there's a potential, or as you look at the labor costs and the amount of hours that are put into this contract, we're billing you this one project, but the, there's hours that are left over, we don't lose them, they go to our bank.
And, and both of our server replacements before, we did actually have hours remaining that were put back in the tech bank, if you support our banking.
So you wouldn't have any questions other than why is it so darn expensive? I'll entertain a motion to approve resolutions twenty-three dash eleven, waiving the bidding requirements and accepting the quote of Entree Computer Services or Solutions for Server Replacement of the Police Department in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, five hundred, sixty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents. Second, questions, comments, or concerns? Mr. Deputy Kirk, can you call the roll, please? Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Futter? Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
No.
Mr. Mott?
Aye.
Ms. Paul Street?
Aye.
Looking past five. In your packet, there are some building permit reports. There's an engineering report and there's a police report. See here, it says presented by Lieutenant Jim Bedlock. So are you going to speak to us this evening or do we just? Hold me, see how many questions. You're not going to get up and speak to us?
No, sir.
It says presented by. I formerly presented to you. Do you guys have any questions about the building reports? Josh, do you have any things you want to add about the building report?
I'll just say that Lenar in eighteen, this, this is only the last fiscal year, but Lenar in the last eighteen months sold around seventy-five permits, Thames Farm. And Crown is opening four new neighborhoods, Prairie Ridge North, and looking to open Oakstead as well. So it doesn't appear like it's going to be slowing down anytime soon. Of course, you never know.
And the houses are being sold.
Yeah. People are buying houses. Well, that means to be fair, Lenar's building some spec homes. But people are buying houses.
There's such a shortage of inventory of existing homes, the new home stands are really going strong nationwide. You know, it's interesting, too, all the discussions. People, some of the lots and small offices are largest lots in the community. They're on the simple. Very interesting. They, they are selling most lots at around twenty thousand dollars. Still, Josh, it's much faster. So I'll, I'll maybe a little discount.
Can I just go about the police BFOP contract? It says there's a tentative agreement that's been reached and it's a ready ratification. That was in February. Is there any update on that without?
I can tell you that's, yes, that's actually ratified yesterday. So we'll be up through your group on June first, fourth. We're very pleased with you.
Thank you.
On the building permits, has any of the developers spoken to or have we looked at based on the, the eighteen months or twelve-month historicals, what the projection going forward looks like and what potential development, what the volume of development could look like coming through FY twenty-four? Yes, in fact, just on Friday, we had a major meeting here on our utilities master plan. And we've projected out, pardon, we've got twenty years for, for all of the developments in town. So I guess we have a very good projection now. And you'll be seeing results of that in late July, early months.
Any other questions on the report says presented?
Is there a wager at all on the cap on the rooftop?
Yes. So that, I was going to announce at the end of the meeting here, but we've actually, I don't, I can't say threatened or challenged or whatever. We've engaged with Chinanigans, I guess, with Pinky Grove for the first time. They've got a mayor over there and she likes the kind of fun that we have over here. And so we've bet the, and the mayor of Gilbert's as well. The mayor of Burlington and I will be out tomorrow morning from five o'clock until nine. I have to take my son to school at some point. But then I'll be back. But we'll be out as a dump in right here tomorrow. And we're hoping to raise more money so that I don't end up in the dump tank again. But based on how conversations have gone around here in recent months, I'm sure there's going to be a line around the block at Gilbert's Community Days the first weekend in June if I end up in the dump tank. So it was a pretty good turnout last year as well. So Guy and I both did it. But this year now, we've engaged, this president, Kukubek from Pinky Grove, and the mayor of Burlington as well, who's, by the way, it's her birthday today. So happy birthday, President Walz. Where are you going to be? Dumping dump tomorrow morning, right on, right, right over here on seventy-two. Hopefully it's not raining, so I'd be on the roof. But if it is raining, I guess I won't wear a tinsel hat and I'll be okay or hopefully well.
So what time should you pick up my?
Fantastic.
I'll supply the miller.
Fantastic. But we're looking forward to cop on the rooftop. Officer Marshall has done a great job kind of wrestling that all together, right? I'm not leaving anybody out. I'm sure you were involved in some of the planning as well.
Very little. Officer Marshall did, did have some saves on.
And I know that Chief Dan coordinated a whole bunch of stuff. And, and so we're looking to have some fun tomorrow. And if I end up in the dump tank, I end up in the dump tank. It is what it is. It was fun last year. Wasn't as bad as I thought it was going to be.
Probably should let everybody know that Chief Dan has been, I think, he's on sick with a virus this week and turned out to be a skull blader, which had emergency, oh, but it was surgery today. So he's been laid up for about a week. Yeah, we're, we're, so it's hope he's recovering. Did he bring a card for the board to sign the central? Not yet. Oh. Linda usually takes care of that. She's on vacation.
Yeah, you gotta cut Jason's slack. That's, that's more clerk function than a village manager function.
See if Josh picks that up tomorrow.
You're gonna know, you don't, you don't have a card nearby? All right. Does anybody else have any questions about the village's committee or village staff reports? Okay, then we'll move on to the regular accounts payable in the amount of five hundred and forty-five dollars and thirteen cents. Does anyone have any questions about the accounts payable to personnel? Hearing none, I'll entertain the approval of the accounts payable to personnel in the amount of five hundred and forty-five dollars and thirteen cents.
I'll make your motion.
I have a question, a second. Any questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Deputy Kirk, can you call the roll, please? Ms. Futter? Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Mott?
Aye.
Ms. Paul Street?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Looking past six zero. Okay, next, the big one, eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and forty cents. Anyone have any questions?
I've got a question, just a general, or a policy. Disbursement of transition fees, that's a monthly.
It is. Thirty-six new home permits last, last month.
Thirty-six permits. The community school district got a hundred and thirty-one thousand families.
Three thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars, sixty-eight cents each.
But who's counting?
We, we are.
I knew you were going to ask that question. I've got my number.
You know, I, I, I didn't know if it was quarterly or what, because all of them are kind of high. And that's where I just wondered. I thought it was monthly, but it just seemed.
Yes.
In the past, we've been averaging sixty permits a year. That's. Well.
This is one month, so thirty-six, yeah. I just have one question about the, the channel grinder, page forty-one.
Yes.
That was, that's been purchased. Is there, is there any financing of that or that's, it's done in?
No. So we actually did some swapping. And when we get to the budget committee, I have some information from Mr. Kelly that he asked for at the last meeting. But we actually did some swapping of planned expenditures in order to get that channel grinder. So we've, you know, had to carry over some, some things. So no financing.
And it's installed. Amazing.
Amazing.
They saw the video.
Yeah, no longer rick and rag.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the accounts payable?
On page forty-five, under superior industrial wastewater treatment platform stream repair, what's stream repair? It's fifty-eight thousand?
So that, that is part of our primary treatment. After it comes into the Harmony Pump Station, which is at the head of. After it comes into the Harmony Pump Station, which is at the head of the plant, goes through the grinder, it's pumped to the back of the plant, up to a building called Mount Tim. And Mount Tim has a special piece of equipment called a screen, and you'll remember, we talked about a gearbox. The gearbox had to be completely rebuilt.
Yes, this isn't.
And this is.
When people are looking at, this isn't a screen.
It's a, it's a piece of machinery.
Springs.
It's not like a window screen.
I knew it wasn't.
Right.
I could have done that for much people.
It's a little bit more technical than when it was.
But it's actually, a screen is a type of machinery at wastewater treatment.
It's filtration.
Yes.
It's part of the same filtration that the grinder does. The grinder prepares it for the screen, and so the screen mouth, we had three pieces of equipment that were all down, and they're all impacting the same same treatment.
Okay.
Now they're all three out of there.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the regular accounts payable in the amount of eight hundred eighty-nine thousand two hundred nineteen dollars and forty cents. Eight hundred eighty-nine thousand two hundred nineteen dollars and forty cents.
On the detailed report, the total of all invoices is eight hundred eighty-nine thousand seven hundred sixty-four dollars and fifty.
That adds in the five hundred dollars to employees and officials, so it's combined.
But we have to approve the employee.
I understand we've approved a different, it's just the details follow right after the main one, so, okay, thank you.
Okay, so I have a first. Do I have a second? Can I get a second? Again, I have a second and a third now. Perfect, all right. Can you call the role please? Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Coates?
Hi.
Mr. Mott?
Hi.
Ms. Paul Street?
Hi.
Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
Ms. Butler? Motion passed six zero. Okay, Village Board Committee reports. Business Development Commission?
Yes, the Business Development Commission met last night. It was Chairman Kerjacki's final meeting. And so just, you know, I want to start off on behalf of the commission, but also, I think, on behalf of all of us, thanking Chairman Kerjacki for his long years of service to the community. We talked about it last night, almost twenty years of service in various roles to the to the Hampshire community, so thank you for that. We discussed the presentation that was going to happen tonight, also about Ms. Martin becoming the chairwoman of the committee. We, beautification committee report on the facade program, the Hampshire Garden Berry, and also whether there was interest coming for other projects. One of the things that we also discussed is potentially looking at having a proactive effort when it came to the beautification or the facade program of finding businesses and approaching them to say, hey, there's a program that we think would be beneficial for you because your building could utilize this. So there may be some more discussions around that. So we also then, as chairman or outgoing chairman Kerjacki, explained, you know, the BBC has really been focused on this economic development strategy for fifteen months, and so last night, having this wrapped now, the question was, what's what's next, right? Anyone who ever, who've ever watched The West Wing, President Bartlet, what's next, right? And so we discussed a lot of different potential projects and interests of the members, and I think that'll be one of the next things that Chair Chairwoman Martin will help guide us in is what is that next project that we take on as as the B D C? We discussed Hampshire very own. And the continuation of that, the next company highlighted right now would be Kruger Accounting, so they would be the next one. And then we got an update from Mr. Ray on businesses in town and if there's interest in different areas and how things are going. Anything that I missed from the members of the commission?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions? That's it for B D C?
Public Works, no report. Budget?
No report, but sounds like Laurie has something to add.
So trustee Kelly asked at the last meeting if we could discuss some of the capital items that have been pushed from the twenty twenty-three budget to the twenty twenty-four and beyond. So I just made a short list of what we have. In the general fund, we actually, because of the timing of the five squad cars that we most recently received, pushed the replacement of squad eighty-four and eighty-five to fiscal year twenty-five, so that that pushes on. We have moved safe routes to schools, so any engineering from this particular fiscal year twenty-three that's now going to be engineered in fiscal year twenty-four. A snowplow which we, which you approved to purchase, I believe, last April. It's still not even in production. That's a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars that was moved from fiscal year twenty-three to twenty-four. And depending on how the production goes, it may go beyond that. With respect to years in the general fund beyond that, we have a second snowplow in fiscal year twenty-five, projected at two hundred and fifteen thousand. The replacement of squad eighty-six at sixty-three thousand. And then some adjustments to the purchase price of eighty-four and eighty-five because of the timing, an additional fourteen thousand. And then equipment at the P D, which includes everything from ballistic shields to various other pieces of equipment in the amount of twenty-three thousand dollars. And then in the street department in fiscal year twenty-six, we've kind of pushed some things out, such as the crack sealer, which is at eighty-four thousand dollars, a ditch mower, and some other equipment totaling one hundred and ten thousand dollars. So over the next, let's see, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, three years, we have approximately seven hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars in capital items.
And anything in this coming budget or in the budget now is already included.
Correct, yes, yep.
And by moving the crack filler, was that staff's decision?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
You understand that none of the roads are, have been paved except one, and if we do one a year, in five years, we'll be all driving on gravel, and that crack filler will buy time, five to ten years on a road. So by pushing that crack filler is is wrong. That's a bad mistake. I'll just state that. The bad mistake.
I think.
I filled miles of cracks. It's a bad mistake.
I think the plan is still to do crack sealing. It's just going to be with rented equipment like we've done in the past, at least for.
For a week. They get it for a week.
That mistake is called make those priority changes.
Okay. I'm just saying for the record, it's a wrong, it's a wrong decision that the roads are slowly deteriorating now, and we're not getting a crack filler for a few more years.
Have we reached out to other municipalities in the area to see if they have a crack filler that we could potentially borrow instead of renting?
We, there's nobody that has one we can borrow yet, but there are a couple of preachers that are interested and may be jointly going to gather with us.
And should that opportunity arrive, we we adjust if there was an opportunity to share costs with another municipality.
Sure.
I know that that's been a big thing that we've been talking about at Metro West, a lot of shared services and that kind of thing, and I know that there's a lot of municipalities that we were just talking about that are interested in kind of redoing the way that they look at things instead of going down their own, so maybe that's a conversation we can have with some of the other municipalities, because I'm sure we're all feeling the hurt. Okay. Any other, so that's budget, then. Do you have anything else to add and signs?
The only other thing that I wanted to say is that kind of addresses the general fund and your direct question, but to kind of go back to your question, Laura, with Ms. Paul Street, with respect to the channel grinder. So we deferred some engineering for rehabbing our U V treatment. That's the like glass treatment before water is released to the ditches on its way to the creek. And we also deferred the rehab of a Moino, which is a brand name pump in the thickener building at the wastewater treatment plant. We, that was forty thousand dollars, sorry, the rehab, engineering rehab was just preliminary at like five thousand dollars. There's a VAT, a VAT actuary rehab that was planned at ten thousand dollars, and then four lift stations, transvoltage surge suppression, I always have to think twice about the acronym there, at sixty thousand dollars. All of those items have been moved to fiscal year twenty-four.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Anything else further to the board? Any questions on what the plans have presented?
Thank you. You're welcome.
Public relations?
No.
Okay, that brings us to our next thing on the agenda here is Village Board Committee Report. So we've had the longstanding tradition around here, and I didn't want to be the one to break it daily. We kind of shuffle them up, shuffle up committees every time that there is an election. Standing standing thing would be to, the current chair gets just, they stay on the committee, and then there's a new chair. The one that always throws a wrench in this or has been, since Toby's been on the board respectfully, has been. Toby has intimate knowledge of public works and is a huge asset for the staff in that department, and so while we've made some changes to the members of that committee, we typically leave Toby alone. So for good reason, as you see, it's as intimate knowledge with the cracks here, so. And unless unless trustee Coates is ready to give up the chair of that committee yet, I'm comfortable just leaving him. If the board throws a fight, we can, I don't want to do development diets, but we can, we can talk about that as well. So what I present to you is 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 we're kind of, my thoughts. I'm comfortable moving forward. If the board is coming, we'll move forward. Okay, so I don't, I don't think we need to vote for that. I think that's just, it is what it is, correct?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, we do need to vote, okay. So then I will entertain a motion to approve the committee assignments from now until the end of my term. I have your first, and I have a second. Questions, comments, concerns? You call the role, please, Mr. Deputy Clerk? Mr. Coates?
Hi.
Mr. Mott?
Hi.
Ms. Paul Street?
Hi.
Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
Ms. Butler? Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Motion passed six zero. Okay, new business or other announcements?
President and I have one announcement. I'd like to inform the board in public that there will be a public hearing on June twelfth, Middle School, for the light properties. This should be for two northern properties, this is a lower property in Charlotte. It'll be at seven P M at Hampshire Middle School. As you all know, there was a meeting last Monday, but this will be the formal public hearing. The application is on on the website and all the documents related to the project are on the website now on a light Miami page for Village Board as well as numbers to the public.
So statute notices fifteen days and we've given them, but we're giving one more notice.
They will be provided.
Right, right, so we've set the date, and the official notices will go out according to timeline?
Just for my clarification, this is the official public hearing with planning.
Correct.
And they will make a recommendation to the Village Board for that.
Okay, thank you. I feel indulged me. Attorney, Ms. Sally?
Yes.
You sent us, there were questions brought up and multiple times, the statements were made that we have the authority to just not hear applications that have been submitted to the village in correct fashion. That's been made several times to trustees here on the board and commission members, that we just have this authority not to hear it. So we had our attorney dig into it, and he sent a copy to the Village Board, which we, of course, will post on the website as well if we need to, about the statute. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Absolutely. So, thank you, Mr. President. The petition that has been received by the village is governed under section seven dash one dash eight of the online municipal code. And that section specifically states that upon receipt, the board is required to hear and determine on the question of annexation. Reading exactly from a transcription of the statute, the corporate authorities of the municipality shall then consider the question of the annexation of the territory. I believe the territory is so described, but the corporate authorities obviously are the Village Board and the president of the village. And the consideration of the question, in my experience and every practitioner's experience, is to bring that forward. So there is no way to summarily dismiss or just kind of hand wave or demure the petition. It has to be heard.
And and so I guess the question that I have, and I don't mean to put you on the spot.
Now, please.
Is if we, you know, if we got a petition, let's say, let's just play this out from what it gave, we got a petition, and this village board didn't feel like it was a good idea to add to the village or annex to the village. Going through the village board first without going through the planning and zoning commission, circumventing our own process, that's not a good practice.
Yeah, it is. It's not a good practice. The state statute deals directly with the board. But it is not a good practice. It has to go to this point. We would be subject to legal sanction, and a developer who knew enough to find these sections of the statute would know enough to be able to bring a suit against the there's no question about that.
I just, I just wanted to address in open session the conversation, we don't have to hear petitions. Because I just, I don't feel that that's the, a fair statement to make. I think that we, the statement is made that we don't have to hear that, that they're, it's hand in hand. We don't have to hear a petition that's submitted, and that we don't have to allow land into the village. The second part of that statement is true. We don't have to allow land into the village. That's a hundred percent accurate, but it has to follow the process. It has to go through the process. And so my con, my conversation to the attorney and the staff were, find out for me who is the, because it was maybe the statement has been made over again that the village has the authority to, okay, who's the village? It's not me as village president. It's not this, you know, theoretically, it's this board, but what's the process for it to get here? And that's, I guess, so I guess the conversation is, so we do have the authority to just unilaterally, not unilaterally, or to just come to this board and say, no.
Yes, yes.
According to that state's statute.
Seven dash one dash eight allows us to reject the petition.
So that.
Means skipping over plan.
So skipping, so skipping, but my question.
By state statute?
No, it goes directly. It can go directly. So my question is, is so at this board, the conversation is, you know, we have a planning and zoning commission. I think that they do a good job vetting, and I think it does a good job of the board out in the community. This board isn't interested in usurping.
Yeah, it might be, yeah.
The board, this board isn't interested in usurping planning and zoning commission based on the.
No, they do a great job. They vet everything, and then it comes to us.
Right.
Why would we want to change that?
I'm just, just for sake of conversation, I knew what the answer was going to be, but for sake of the conversation, I wanted to have the conversation with this board. And so we made it, okay, this this argument's over.
As a point of clarification, the question respectfully, Mr. President, was, does the state statute require it? Yes, I believe our village code requires it to go through the village.
Okay.
Planning and zoning commission, but the state statute only requires it to go.
But again, so this board has made a career or made a perfectly clear, I mean, we've all acted in effect that we're not going to break our own laws. We've specifically gone out of the way not to break our own ordinances. So and specifically as it relates to this instance, this board is not interested in one, changing our ordinances or breaking our laws.
And then the general concepts of municipal law, a board has to follow its own rules, just like any organization has to follow its own bylaws. So what if our, if our code says that, it's just the same as the state statute's saying it. It's just the state statute only deals with.
I just wanted to have this conversation in open session, so it was clear. I appreciate your indulgence this evening. Does anyone else have anything to add or announce or anything?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Just one announcement. Unfortunately, I regret to say that I am going to have to be in the other representation now as a trustee in the village. I was hired last month for United States Congressman, and I oversee eight counties in his district, and it makes it very difficult to be getting back and forth on time for things, doing a lot of traveling back and forth. And I just don't feel it's proper for me to get it to, you know, I want to give my full attention to the business, and I can't do that if I'm doing all that traveling. So I'm going to step down from this position and continue to volunteer in the village. But at a pace that I can do a little better than my, so giving my full attention to my job.
You feel about police tensions? No, congratulations. Seriously, I had to break the tension.
Thank you.
Really appreciate your service, and you always have a home here, so we'll get you. Really appreciate your service and you always have a home here, so we'll get you involved. I'm telling you, you're not, you're not getting off that easy. He, he tried to get away from it too.
Maybe we need to talk.
I definitely just. It was a great twenty minutes.
Well, I'm, I'm telling you, I'm really sorry to hear that, but we've done some really great work together and you always.
Thank you, thank you. I've, I've made the resignation if I can, June first, so I can't make the June first meeting, which kind of pushed me to make the decisions.
We're gonna table the resignation.
Yeah, well, we, we, we. If it's in the letter and you're committed to a sign, if we need to push it for a while until we find somebody, we're good to, we'll make it. Okay.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, congratulations.
Wow. I don't know if I can talk to you.
No, I think I have mostly good chair.
I got a little, I would like, I can't follow that up. Since, I would like to congratulate all of the seniors that are graduating Hampshire High School and surrounding communities. End of school year is next Friday, so congratulations to all the kids who made it to another year. Good luck to the ones moving on to college or wherever they may be going. Sorry, trustee Coe, because he's gonna have more work to do. Department of District hiring for summer help, which I'm looking at.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
So congratulations to all the kids, have a safe summer.
Our administration moved, didn't, I don't even know whether. One thing as well, since we're gonna be meeting again before that, I want to thank Mr. Hedges for bringing the parties together around the Memorial Day remembrance service that's gonna take place. So anyone in the village wants information, who should they reach out to? Is it like the township building they should reach out to?
Mr. Paddock, is Roger Paddock?
Paddock's gonna make it, okay, and there will be.
I'd have the Legion call a crane and get him, maybe get a flag up.
Yeah, so they're, they're gonna have the service over at the memorial and it's always a a great thing to be a part of, so I encourage anybody that has the ability to be there. And I know that they're still gonna be putting up the signs along the street and the path, remembering those that have served in our villages. Because it's weekend, we will use our pool ice fans on the Michaela first time Friday the twenty-sixth.
Anybody else have any announcements or? All right, well then I'll see you guys all tomorrow morning at Dr. Gilman's. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, sorry.
Thank you, guys.
Congratulations, ladies.